Mr. Roman? Mr. Johnson is not here yet. Mrs. Swanson? Here. And I need a motion to adjourn to closed session for personnel reasons. Actually, we'll be taking a moment to move into session. Moved by Jim and seconded by Barb. And Mrs. Center, please call 111. Nobody go online. Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mrs. Inteher?
Yes.
Mrs. Hackel?
Yes.
Mr. Knicker?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes, we are adjourned to closed session.
Moved by Ken, seconded by Shawian. Mrs. Center, please call 111, please. Mr. Knicker?
Yes.
Mrs. Hackel?
Yes.
Mr. Dugan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Inteher?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes, we are re-convoked. And Ms. Bullock, can I ask you to give us a quick question?
Ladies and gentlemen, the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for being here tonight, everybody. And I will say that the last time I was at Wheat North, just a few days ago, I saw the lacrosse team practicing in the snow. And I noticed today when I drove up, they had no snow to practice on, so that's great. Communication with the whole school, one of the best parts of the week.
Thank you. Good evening, and let me begin by extending a warm welcome to Dr. Harris, Superintendent, President Rosemary Swanson, members of the Board of Education, members of Superintendent's Cabinet, and members of the audience. Welcome to Wheat North High School. I'm always thrilled to have the opportunity to showcase our school. First of all, on behalf of Wheat North and Wheat Northville South High Schools, I would like to thank the Board of Education for the dedicated professional learning communities, late start days at the high school level. The certified faculty have worked very hard to strengthen and enhance our essential standards at both high schools. People have met throughout the year on PLC teams working depth diligently on this process. For the first time in my nine years in this district, both high schools combined on the February 15th in-service days, and it was an unbelievably powerful day for us. Two very, very talented high schools collaborated on what they believe was essential and important for our students in District 200 to know and be able to do in courses and programs. Teachers are very passionate people, as you know. We had and continue to have some very intense conversations, but in the end, the PLC process becomes the way we do our work, both Dave Claypool, the principal of Wheat Northville South, and I believe that we will offer an even greater program for our students, offering them more opportunities through this process. So again, we wanted to thank you. I'm thanking you for both of us for this dedicated time. When I do have the opportunity to address the Board of Education, I always like to showcase our teenagers. In today's media, there seems to be more bad press about teenagers than good, and so I always like to let you know that there's lots of good in the world. And I'm going to read a letter that was sent to me last month from a community member. Dear Ms. Bullock, my name is Sheldon Olson. My wife Joyce and I and our daughter Holly reside on President Street here in Wheat. Joyce and I have lived at this location for the past 49 years, so that would put our ages in the mid-seventies. The reason for this letter is as follows. Our grandson, Lieutenant Corporal Kyle Panley, U.S. Marine Corps, has just returned home upon completing a 12-month tour of duty in Afghanistan. This past Monday, in our grandson's honor, my wife and I and our daughter Holly, Kyle's mother, hung a banner on our front porch welcoming Kyle home. On Friday, February 8th, 2013, two young ladies rang our bell, our front doorbell. They had seen the banner in a thoughtful gesture, had arrived with two flower arrangements to give Kyle as their "thank you" for his service to our country. Unfortunately, Kyle was not appeared to personally receive the flowers, but we soon made him aware of the gift and the words of gratitude expressed by these two young ladies. When I answered the door, I was so surprised by their kind words of "thanks for Kyle's service." I don't recall if I properly thanked them for their dedication to somehow honor a U.S. Marine that they had never met. Another reason for writing to you at this time is to seek your help in possibly identifying the two referenced young ladies, as they both are seniors at Wheat North High School. Along with the flowers, they handed me a note directed to Kyle, and he photocopied it for me. As you can see, the note was simply signed to Maddie and Sarah, also stating the fact that they were both seniors at her school. And the note reads, "To Kyle and his family, my friend and I noticed your 'Welcome Home' sign as we drove past, and we wanted to let you know that we appreciate your service and love for our country. We are seniors at Wheat North and are so glad we made it home safe. I feel you," he's talking to me, "and possibly some of the other members of the faculty should know about this unselfish act demonstrated by these two young ladies. I'm truly pleased to know that our nation and our school system is in the process of developing young people with the values shown by Maddie and Sarah." So at this time, I would like to introduce you to Maddie and Sarah. It's Maddie Denuzzer and Sarah Rowe. Can we come forward, please? This is Maddie. This is Sarah. And these two seniors really represent who we are as a school. Our student body is made up of teenagers who are kind and very respectful. And it really is, for me, a terrific place to work. So thank you, ladies, for all you do. So I wanted to share a few more stories with you this evening. I am, after all, a very proud principal, and you know that because I talk about how wonderful the student body is all the time. But then I changed my mind. I asked Sandy Burden, who is a teacher of our contemporary broadcast class, which is a new class this year, if first students could do a short video project on what our students believe it means to be a Wheat North Falcon. The project involved responses from a variety of students, and as you watch this video, you will know for certain that it was not staged. There are parts that are a little difficult to hear, but you will still get the main idea. And as principal, this video, as I watched it, really confirmed what I really know about this school.
What does it mean to be a Falcon?
You have to be nice and loyal. Be respectful. Okay, I think it means doing your thing and just try to help others. They're not myself.
Students here, they make you feel comfortable. It's a really nice environment. I wouldn't say it's a completely stress-free. Some of the homework is very hard. But nonetheless, students and the teachers, they all work together. They're all fun. Whenever you're around, you can just bring the best out of you. And I can be myself here.
One thing I really like about Wheat North is the buckets and the spirit.
We are really good at sports. We have great teachers and the atmosphere. We've got this really kind of family or intent.
The most thing that I'd like to see is them be what is all my friends and friends, and that's why I like Wheat North.
I think that Wheat North has a lot of opportunities to get involved, like student council, there's kid club. There's all sorts of clubs that students have a lot of time to get to know each other and help out just in Wheat North, like basketball and basketball.
I think I like coming to school because I can talk to my friends and I can learn new stuff.
And what makes Wheat North great is the school spirit and the state environment. We made that thing ourselves. We have a lot of super fans. They come to the girl basketball games, so you can join a part of the basketball team.
We are the best school in Illinois. We are family. We are family.
I like Keating Dark because all of the teachers are nice and they want to help you. Everybody's really helpful. My first week of school, I get lost in the manner of every single work I do.
We gotta be right there, actually, much time.
Wheat North is a great school because it provides a lot of kids with opportunities to excel. The teachers are great, the students are great. It's just a great atmosphere to learn.
The people are great, the teachers are great. You don't have to worry about being bullied or anything like that. Plus, it's just a fun place to be.
Probably the music program. Music program players. It's a very tight-knit community. We're all really friends. It's kind of like a family to me, too.
Wheat North has so many opportunities, like the play, musical, orchestra, after-school activities, sports and everything. It just really needs to be involved into being into the school and having school spirit and lead you into your future. It makes you more responsible.
It also has many options in the vending machine, which are good reasonable prices. The people are very nice, and it's very hard to find some people like.
I like this school because of the people and the teachers. I'm a senior year of Wheat North. My two favorite things about Wheat North are, first of all, the variety of people. There are so many nice people here, and there's never a day where you don't meet someone new and interesting. And also, it's a very serious learning environment. Like in all my classes, there's an expectation to do well and give your best.
A lot of teachers are nice and various. To each other, probably just a sense of community and pride, I feel, and pride, so yeah. So I like it.
The speech team, track, cross-country, math team, all that good stuff. It's an awesome school.
Wheat North is a great school because you can get hot chocolate in the libraries. The teachers here, they actually care about you. They want you to succeed, and they try their best to help you do so.
Wheat North is so good that I can't explain it to them. There's nothing else.
So, teachers care, high expectations, lots of opportunities, sense of community and pride, and most importantly, great kids. I couldn't have made a better commercial if I did it myself. It really is a privilege to work here. I work with amazing people each and every day, amazing student body. I especially enjoy working with my administrative team who are here tonight. Matt Whiskin, Phil Britton, Matt Fisher, and Jim Mangus. I'm sure they're in the back of the room. But I really, this school is who we are because we do have a team approach in this building. And on behalf of all of us, I want to thank you for your support of Wheat North High School, the PLC opportunities this year, and everything you do on behalf of our students. So it really is something special. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And you know what? It's so wonderful to see. And so many times in that video, we heard the word "community" and "family", and one of our core values is the importance of the partnership with the community. And you're right, we've got a lot of wonderful talent in terms of staff. But really, the community sends us great kids. And every parent always sends their best. But we have particularly good kids coming to us. So thank you so much. Wheat North, pass it on to your staff for all you do with those good kids. That is great. Now, speaking of good kids, I do see a number here. Are they here just for class, or did they have something to do with that video?
They're actually south students.
South students? Well, even better. Welcome. All right. Modifications to the agenda. Are there any modifications that board members wish to make? See, none? Public comments on the agenda items? Are there any signed up tonight?
No.
None tonight? And that keeps the superintendent report.
Moving right along here. Good evening, board members and community. Welcome to Wheat North High School. Several things here this evening, all pretty brief. But first of all, one of the reasons why we were in closed session here this evening is that we have two new principals here this evening that are recommended for both Lowell Elementary and Hawthorne Elementary. They are on the personnel report this evening. The board will hopefully be approving here in a short period of time. I would like to take this opportunity, though, to introduce them. First, Kathy Melton. Kathy, you can stand. Kathy is going to be the new principal at Lowell Elementary, and we are happy to have her here this evening. Congratulations, Kathy. Also this evening, Danielle Moran is here. She will be the new principal at Hawthorne Elementary. Congratulations. And again, this is pending the board approval of the personnel report here in a few minutes. Couple other items I'd like to share with the board is, first is a reminder about the charter school hearing that we're going to have next Monday night. This is a special hearing that we are required to do because we have been given a proposal by a charter school that would like to open up in our community. There is a very specific dedicated process to that laid out in the school code and Almoi State law. And one of those first steps is to have a hearing. And the Board of Education will be hosting that hearing next Monday night. I have received three letters, actually myself and Rosemary. It was a joint letter, actually. Received these letters over the last month and a half. The first letter I received was on January 21st. So this was not something that we were aware of prior to that. And it has taken a lot of staff time over the last month and a half to go through this process to understand exactly the process we must go through. On February 14th, I did receive a large package. It was not a Valentine gift on February 14th. And it was a large package from the charter school, which is named Virtual Learning Solutions, and is the outline of their entire school program and their curriculum that they are proposing to our Board of Education for consideration. Our staff is currently going through that proposal and looking at it, and we will have lots of questions and comments at that hearing as well. That hearing is next Monday night, March 18th, at the SSC Building. And it will also be having a court reporter there for that particular hearing because there will be a lot of testimony in regard to them. They have indicated they will show up, and they are going to present. Our staff will ask questions. We will open it up for community input as well at evening. And then the board has the opportunity to deliberate after that. And one of the final steps at the community level, at the local level, is that we will have to take board action in a dedicated time period here. So we will be bringing forth an action item on the next regular scheduled board meeting on April 10. The board must take action on that item one way or the other under state law, based on the information that's provided. Because there is a timeline that is crystal clear about what our expectations are, and we have to have that vote 30 days after we have the hearing. So we will have to take the vote, and then it will move forward. They will have an option then. It is a pretty lengthy process. We will talk more about it next Monday night, about the details. But I wanted to make the board and the community aware of that special hearing next week. Also, as everyone is well aware, a school was canceled last Tuesday. I will tell you that was not the easiest decision at 4:30 in the morning, trying to anticipate what Mother Nature had in store for us that day. Because of that school closing, we will be bumping that school one day in June. We will be adding a date to the end of the school year, which will be June 5th. It's a Wednesday, so please mark your calendars. Any parents and students are here this evening, we will be having one more day at school in June for that day off last week. We will be bringing the corrected calendar to the April board meeting. We do have to file it with the regional office of the state. We will be bringing that correction at that time for board approval. I make it official, but we've been sharing that with schools, and I got asked that question this morning by the District BTA as well. So that will be the recommendation. We look forward to make up that day. And finally, just a couple things that's been going on in our schools this week. At the K-8 level, we have been completing the ISAT testing in all buildings. I've been in several elementary schools over the last week and a half, and they are winding down with that one day off last week. It did set everything back a little bit. So I know they're scrambling now to get all of the makeups done and the testing completed. And then we will be on spring break, the week of March 25th. So no school that week. And I know the kids and staff always enjoy that time off. Hopefully, Mother Nature will cooperate with us at that time. So that concludes the superintendent's report unless there's any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. There are 11 items of consent agenda. Moving on to that. Acceptance of a gift to Franklin Middle School. Approval of revised board policy 2.150 board committees. Approval of revised policy 7.60 student residence. Approval to purchase wide-area network services. Approval to purchase internet connectivity services. Approval to purchase color copier and associated service and maintenance contract. Approval of the 2013-2014 fee schedule. Approval of proposal for physical education uniform vendor. Approval of bills, Campbell, and Paywell. Approval of minutes, February 13th, 2013, open and close. And approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to October 2011 as allowable by law. And approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any items which board members wish to remove from the consent agenda? If there are none, I will look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as recommended. Moved by Andy, seconded by Barb. Second. Got it. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments about consent agenda items?
Just a note to the public that the fee schedules did not change. I'm just extremely excited to see that being brought up. For a brief moment, I was excited to see the word "uniforms." However, with respect to uniforms, I would like to see that we're able to hold a cost on the uniform. The cost of the future of the year is absolutely excellent.
If there's no other problem, Kathy, go ahead.
The gift to Franklin, you know, we always are, I guess, I always am amazed at the dollar bonds that have been financed in cash and in money to large scale. Whoever the anonymous owner is, at this time, we're all thanking this board level, all of us. Appreciate anything we can do to benefit the students and to make videos like this, to make the kids come alive from our early childhood center to our graduating class and the transition program is always good to see. So thanks again to whoever donated the finances to the Franklin Middle School. I'm sure we put the good use as it was described, and I'll be just excited about all the time that parents come forward. We talked about community earlier, and this is just a part of that. Community continues to support beyond what they have to do. So thanks in the road for that.
Thank you. You're always good to point that out to us and remind us about that sometimes, yeah, you do. If there's no other questions and comments, I will call for a vote. Remember to vote online. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Inteher?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hackel?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Knicker?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes, the consent agenda is approved. And with that, we welcome Ms. Melton and Ms. Moran. Thank you very much. Welcome aboard. And you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but we do understand you also have duties in other districts right now. So if you want to leave, we won't hold it against you, whatever you care to do. And same thing with members of the audience who may have been here earlier for the presentations and such. It's always an interesting meeting, but you can go. We don't feel badly about it. So thank you very much.
Now we move on to one discussion item, which is performance contracting update. Dr. Harris?
This discussion item this evening is a carryover from the meeting, the whole meeting that we had a few weeks ago. And it's in regard to performance contracting discussion that we had. And in that meeting, we laid out a variety of HVAC and lighting concerns at several different buildings. And at the end of that meeting, it was discussed that staff would go back, review those recommendations and those that work that was done by our vendor. And Mr. Farley would also take a look at what our budget can handle, and we would bring that for discussion tonight, follow up to see what projects, not only do we believe we can complete this summer, but also what we can afford. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Farley this time, and I'm going to let him talk about where we're at over these last couple of weeks. You do have a handout in your green folder that he is going to be referring to. You'll have to ask him about that. Mr. Farley?
I actually blew it up as best I could. It's the original copy, which I have, which was smaller. I forgot the glasses, so I didn't see it. As Dr. Harris mentioned in the last meeting, we, you know, backing up all the way to last summer when the Board of Education approved performance contracting. We approved projects at Lowell, Franklin, and Wheat North High School as part of our initial process in this endeavor and had a successful project. We decided at that time, through a presentation we made to the board, to get your approval, to have a look at the entire district, which they did. Some of the items that they felt were towards the top of the list were presented through six different options last meeting that I gave you. Those projects range, those options range in the $1.5 million to $5 million of work. At that time, I also mentioned that there were some of these projects I felt were right at the top of the list, and that those were the projects that were similarly done here at Wheat North High School that had to be done at Wheat Northville South, mainly the lighting product, or the projects and the work jockey boiler system that we did here as well as at Franklin and Lowell. Tonight, after that meeting, the board asked me to come back with a recommendation. And what you have in front of you tonight is really my core items at Wheat Northville South that I would like to see attended to. It's about $400,000 worth of work. There's almost $100,000 worth of rebates from the DCEO that helped offset those costs. My recommendation for paying for this, I believe we could either work it through our operating budget or projects, but I think that'd be something good to refer to the finance committee for ultimately as we build our budget moving forward. But I think that's something we can handle in that regard. I hope to seek financing for that amount of project for this endeavor. You may ask why with a smaller number. I, you know, as we look at our budget for next year and look at some of the projects that we already have in the queue, namely the work that we're going to do at both of our high schools on the fields, I think I want to take a somewhat conservative approach to this go-around. As we look out into the future through the five-year plan, we budgeted additional dollars in greater amounts in the coming years as the operating budget shows us a greater surplus, especially three, four years out. So I think that is a reflection on performance contracting in general, but I think these are the critical items and a cost that I think is something I feel good about moving forward with at this time and at the whole committee, especially when the board will be asked to commit a million dollars for new fields, to replace both fields, determine the need of replacement. So based on our power station last time, that's a lot of information for board.
I also want to just follow up and certainly answer questions. The three projects he's talked about are all at Wheat Northville South. You see right there at the top, if you can read this fine print here. It's two lighting projects, you know, the retrofit lights as well as the high-efficiency Lowell boiler at Wheat Northville South. We believe the return in investment will be significant, and that's why. We believe the return in investment will be significant and that's why, and we believe that we can pay for it out of the operating budget and make sure we fit it into budget, make adjustments to, fit it in there to pay for it in the next fiscal year. Mr. Farley also laid out several other lighting projects. The rest of this list is the other lighting projects that are, have been identified at all of our other schools across the district, again with significant paybacks pretty quickly. And I'll let you comment if there's anything else on that. Sure.
The second half is something you didn't see last time. I had asked Performance Services to go back and take a look at, and they have, this was part of their discussion, but this is some of the lighting projects that are available. Mostly they're done in gymnasiums and other areas within our K-8 schools. Some of these, some schools may not be on this because we've already done it. You also may notice when you look at the lighting comparison, if you take a look back at what we did at Wheaton North versus Wheaton North South, there's differences in the amounts. Obviously, there's a different amount of fixtures at each school. Some of the lighting at the school had already been taken care of, so the main contest gym at Wheaton North was done, whereas Wheaton North South had not been done yet. So as you look at lighting comparison from what we did here to Wheaton North South, that's also something to consider. But some of these smaller projects we can take out and see, maybe it's something we go into the spring and take a look at and see if there's some funds available to do these as well. And I asked them to give me a laundry list of the remaining schools where they see the biggest return on investment for those types of projects. So those are other items that we may consider along the way.
So at this time, I want to open it up for discussion. This is where we believe at this time is our best recommendation to continue to seek these energy-related facility items that we can change out and be able to afford in our budget moving forward.
Now, last year, I was on the performance contractor, certainly we looked at this performance contract for the first time and learned that there are some districts throughout the state and in other states that try to include in performance contracting projects. Projects that will improve the school but not generate savings or cost efficiencies. We did not do that last year, and Bill's proposal here is consistent with that same approach, that all the projects that I see on this list have cost savings, one that you're attached to, so they are self-generated and self-financed in some respect. And I think that's a very wise conservative approach. I appreciate the work that Bill and you thought staff were doing. So I appreciate that.
I just, I find it, okay. On the, also you gave us last time, wasn't there a big upgrade to Johnson's boiler as well? Would that be something that you'd be looking at doing, let's say, next year? Because I understand just from my conversations, my teacher group and things like that, there are some big issues with heating and cooling at Johnson. So that's, I don't want them to feel forgotten.
No one has forgotten. All of the projects that we listed are definitely high on the priority list. And, you know, we look at it through a lens of not only energy savings, but, you know, having a learning environment that is appropriate for staff and students. So Johnson is one of the ones that's very high on our list. Obviously, doing the high schools, you know, Colin can tell you that our energy costs at the high school, and obviously these buildings are running almost 24/7 it seems, so we want to try to maximize that energy savings there. But there are, you know, needs across the district and other schools as well as Johnson and where, you know, anything that was on that list, you saw last, that's making a whole meeting, things that are very high on the priority list, and we want to get to as quickly as we can possibly get.
Yeah, if you remember, there was Edison, Johnson, Franklin, I can't remember all of them now, Lowell, and Wheaton North there was some of the wings in the building with the air circulation, the unitent scenarios. I mean, we had a pretty comprehensive list, but after we went back, it's also, I mean, every one of those projects should have been done yesterday, okay? How, you know, we have to be conscious of the fiscal situation we're in and don't get over our skis here and don't get too aggressive. Certainly, we have built into our financial projections to do more of this type of work. And we wanted to get that analysis in front of you at that time. And we went back and looked hard at this and believe this is what we can handle at this particular time.
My other question is, it's just curious that the newest building on your Longfellow has the highest cost in terms of the lighting?
When the original, my guess is, all right, off the top of my head, and maybe Mr. Farley can comment on this, even in a period of 13, 14 years, 13 years, 14 years, however long Longfellow's been open, the lighting specs and the efficiency of high, you know, lighting is, you know, has changed dramatically. And it's pretty much all of the lights in that area that have never been touched since the building has been open. Some of the other buildings, over time, we have retrofitted in some areas, but that particular building, my guess is it's every lamp that's in that, really that's in that situation.
And it's three major areas, whereas some schools, as I mentioned, we've maybe done the Lowell, T-Mall, so it's that, three big areas. And Longfellow's of the library, the gym, and Monteverde's room, so it's three big areas.
Are there board questions?
I just have a comment, is the possibility of doing a bottom portion of this with all of the smaller lighting upgrades and payback, we take the DCEO rebates from both of those and anticipate getting those. We almost could do all of that with the rebates coming back in and possibly afford to do that on a piecemeal basis. I mean, you mentioned that already about the piecemeal, but take a look at the $94,000, the $30,000 in the rebates, that other column quickly doesn't add up to much more than that. So any thoughts on that?
Yes, that's something to look at. I think there's a total of, I can't remember, a bowl, Wheaton North South portion, and the other school, we look at $508,000 worth of work, and I think there's a total of grants of $170,000, or $120,000. So, you know, that's something we can definitely look at as we move forward to evaluate those.
What we have to do, Ken, is we have to make sure they can fit into our operating budget. And, you know, that's, we have, definitely believe we can do the projects at some. That belief, we can build it into our operating budget. Now, you know, we've got some moving targets with that operating budget and our revenue streams. So when it gets a little clearer, then over the next month or two, we might be able to go ahead and complete these other projects as well. But this time, we're confident on the ones at some. We can show these others to you too, because we may bring this back and when we get a little closer and get a little clearer picture on our exact revenues coming from the state, quite frankly.
These revenues to take care of Wheaton North South are not coming out of that $11.8 million that always comes in the question. We're not taking from that or this. We're using, we're taking budgeted amounts of money and not touching our fund, revenue fund to accomplish these.
And any discussion, as I mentioned, with the finance committee that we may want to use, that we could use that as a portion to put in our capital and projects fund, or we could try and fund it out of our operating budget. Again, that's something I'd like to run through the finance committee.
So just to be clear, what you're going to bring us in April, you're still going to bring us something in April to, because it sounded like we needed to get some approval by then in order to move forward in the summer. So you're going to be bringing us these top three projects of the $400,000, $5,000 for sure, and possibly some of the other ones that you think that will fit into the operating budget or the budget projections as we saw them, our five-year projection going out without messing them up, okay? And then my other question to you is, but we're still going to use performance contractors, correct? Even though we're not financing, but we're using them to coordinate the work so that all of the work is done the same way?
Yes, we will. And again, these are budget numbers right now. They're not hard to pass numbers, they're pretty close, I believe. But we will, you know, they go out and get the work out and get pricing, open book pricing, so that we can come back to the board knowing that we've had a good number and bring that work forward that way.
And again, one of the advantages of using the performance contractors, we guarantee the cost savings based on their analysis and the work that's done. So that's why it does pay the payback in a very short period of time or a few years, you know, then we've got to save on the operating expenses, which obviously regenerates itself into our operating funds. So that's why we propose in this particular, this type of work, we use them because they guarantee it. They know that by switching out those lamps, we're going to guarantee these savings in our electricity bills.
And just to backtrack to meetings, I think Mr. Knicker presented on it after our capital facilities meeting, we will start beginning, we will be getting quarterly reports as well as a yearly report on these projects that will come to the board and will share with you. So just to echo what Dr. Harris mentioned.
Great. Are there any other questions, my board members? Joy?
I love the energy efficiency part, and I think that's important, you know, I agree with this go around, but I would love to maybe consider the, what? Oh, consider the comfort and the environment for learning, you know, maybe before energy efficiency in light. I'm just struggling with that a little bit, but I'd really like to have those kids in a good learning environment, and that, you know, for possibly next year, so factor that in.
The lighting is the biggest payback. It's the quickest payback, it's the biggest payback. The HVAC work, you know, if you're talking about the air quality and the room environment scenarios, you're absolutely correct. The payback's a little bit longer, the cost is also higher, if you remember by looking at the proposals that we laid out at the committee whole meeting a couple of weeks ago. And so as Bill and I had both stated, the concern is at this point today, and for the April board meeting coming up, we do not believe it's in our best interest right now financially to be able to move those ahead. If something changes, if we believe we get into a better positive revenue cycle to stage, if I'm not, we're not sure, then, you know, we certainly can bring that back. But at this point, we're not comfortable going out and pursuing that work, you know, until we get a little clearer picture on our budget. Anything else with that, Bill?
Just that I think it's important to realize that, reiterate that Mr. Wilkie and Mr. Hard at Arcade Buildings and Mr.'s duties are always trying to do everything with the power and the best environment.
And I will say, I resonate with what you're saying, you know, that air quality and all of that, the temperature and such. But on the other hand, too, if we put this in and grab these, you know, the payback in terms of the incentives and such, then it sort of puts us that much closer to being able to do some of that more substantial work. Maybe I'm not thinking about that right, but that would be wonderful. Any other questions or comments? I'm assuming that we can, Jim, do you have any? I'm assuming that we can go ahead and send you questions between now and the board meeting, and you will be getting back to us, obviously, with what you are going to recommend, and so we can ask questions at that time. Sounds good?
Yeah, the minimum recommendation you will see in April is the three items at some. That will be the minimum. And we, because we do need to get that approval, and we talked about that at the committee whole meeting, to get the equipment ordered and get moving. So we're staged and ready to go in June when school's out and get that work completed over the summertime. So that will be the minimum. There may be more, depending on where we feel we're at, you know, on, from a budget standpoint, okay?
So in terms of capital projects, when you said the minimum, you're really getting that plus the bits? I mean, I'd like to filter that part of the performance contracting, but...
Absolutely. And will that bill still be ready in April?
Yes.
Yeah, so we will have both of those items, actually for capital projects, that's not performance contracting. But we will also be bringing home, bringing back the recommendation to replace both of the carpets on the flooding fields at both high schools. And we've got the bits out and we will have that ready to go also. Again, very timely. We need that approval to be able to prepare and be ready as soon as we can, as soon as school's out in the summertime to replace both of those.
Good to move on? Okay. Thank you very much for all your work on this, Mr. Farley. Good job. Ring reports, we have one ring report, which is the FOIA report. Reports from board members, finance committee. Jim and I are, sit on the finance committee. And Jim, we want to go ahead and, we're going to split the report between you.
Yes, on the 5th of March, we met with staff and there were two main topics, one of which you'll address. The one I will just briefly touch on is the, as most people know, I guess, at this point in time, is that on November 1st, 2014, the Affordable Care Act kicks in with certain elements that are going to be very challenging for all companies and, you know, the school districts, whatever the case may be. And so during the meeting, company by the benefits decisions who we use helped provide us outside services, who run our benefit plans, gave us a nice presentation, and began basically the process of trying to get our arms and wrap our arms around the financial effect that this Affordable Care Act will have on District 200. So the numbers are, we're still, again, it's a moving target right now because we don't have all the particulars from the federal government as it relates to how it will impact us. But staff and Dr. Harrison and I heard a great presentation and outline about the steps that we must be taking to anticipate and prepare the budget for the effect of this act that takes place in, again, October 1st, 2014. So nothing more to report, other than we're starting to hit the curve and will obviously, once we have more particulars, start building those necessary elements into the budget plan.
That will be the 14, 15 budget is at the curve. Next one, it'll be the following year, but we're trying to get our hands around the details of the impact of the Affordable Healthcare Act.
And the other thing we talked about at that meeting was adding some community input into the finances of our district and what's the best way to go about that? Even when we set up our board committee structure, which we just approved tonight, even though we had directed it months ago. But I think one of the things we envisioned was getting stakeholder input as, through our committees in some way, shape, or form. And so finances is, is one place that we're starting to look at, well, how might that look? And Mr. Farley actually went out and talked to some of his fellow district, you know, counterparts, and found a couple of different models. And basically, there is a model that the Glenbarre schools use where community members sit directly on the finance committee. And then there's a model used by Neiberville where there's actually advisory committee to the finance committee. And so the advantages kind of to that latter model is that it sort of allows you to have a broader membership as opposed to having a single committee that really can't maybe have as many members, it becomes a bit unwieldy. And so something like the Neiberville model would allow us to draw people from various expertise areas in the finance world. And the way it works in Neiberville is they seem to meet about quarterly and they review your basic, you know, they review your budget, they review your audit, certainly can be asked to review or comment on special projects that you may be considering. So we're thinking as a committee, you know, about those two models and just want to kind of let you all know, that's where we're going. And I think we'll probably make a decision so that we can start doing something of that nature for the upcoming school year. So if anybody has real strong feelings, one way or the other, as you sit and think about it, feel free to shoot, you know, myself or Jim a note on that, but those are the two basic things that we're doing right now. Are there any other board reports?
Yeah, we have the subcommittee report, proposals from law firms, for the council for the board. On February 14th, 15th, the subcommittee comprised of Dr. Harris, Farley, Dr. Ramner, Dan Fethopoulos, and myself, met with six law firms to, let us say, more on the side. I think we were speaking to myself, but also hoping for the rest of the students to pull off.
the rest of the industry. We'll go off the premise of the presentation by all six law firms. These six were called down from the original 13 law firms, and significantly opposed this. After two days, at the end of the Friday, we decided that of the six firms, we interviewed two of them, both had shoulders above the other four, and then we had last week to discuss those. Still some diligence that needs to be tidied up before final recommendations can be made to the board at this meeting. So we are looking forward to making that presentation to the board on the next month for recommendations for the council.
What you mentioned before was the conversation and discussion about two firms, one for certain things, one for other things?
We did have a conversation at the end. Two firms have made the final cut for full-service school law firms. Both of them got strong recommendations from the references. So we feel confident we can go ahead with the recommendation for law firm, the wide services.
Thank you to both you and Ken. I know this took a lot of time, so thank you very much. Other board reports?
If not, our topics for future discussion will include a technology update and social emotional learning standards. Announcements, we do have March 18th, as Dr. Harris referenced, will be the charter school hearing, 7:00 PM at the SSE. April 16th will be chance to chat, 4 to 6:00 PM at Wheaton Morneville South. I see there are Wheaton Morneville South students left, so. And then April 24th will be committee in the whole, again, at the SSE. Our next regular meeting will be April 10th at Longfellow Elementary School. And now we come to public comments on that agenda items. And public comments are very important to the board, as you know, since you're speaking. After the journey, we're not going to be adding on them this evening, but we do very much appreciate them and very interested in them. And we do ask that you leave your comments to three minutes. And so with that, I'll call Alan Bergman.
Good evening. Chair, members of the board, my name is Alan Bergman. I'm here to speak specifically about your current issues having to do with preschool and the whole referendum issue for that capital campaign. I live in Northbrook, Illinois. I'm here as an interesting citizen, having spent 45 years working in the field of disability at the local, state, and national level, including 18 years in that rarefied environment called Inside the Beltway. Doing legislative affairs on behalf of children and adults with disabilities across a variety of diagnostic categories. I currently have my own national consulting firm, and we work around the country. But I've been following some of the debate and controversy around this issue. I also wear the hat, by the way, of a dad with a daughter with disabilities, and through second marriages, I have a stepdaughter with disabilities, significant multiple disabilities. So I'm in both sides of this world all the time. I commend you for the initiative that is going to go before the public, and I will have a packet to pass out to you, but I'm smart enough to know if I give it to you now, you won't get my three minutes. This is more than about a building. A building is a tool to achieve an end. And I learned long ago never to assume, you all know what that is. We do. My concern is I have seen many wonderful buildings built in the last three years in this country, and they become cosmetic surgery for the same old stuff. Field of Disability and Special Education and Early Childhood in 2013 is dramatically different even from where it was 10 years ago. We even have evidence-based literature to support common sense. The tone of the principles sets the tone for the school, and that's true for all schools as it relates to inclusion of kids with disabilities. I heard earlier, and I want to come back to this school in my next life, high expectations. I cannot implore more upon you that when those three-year-old children enter the school, regardless of severity of disability, the expectation is they are going to have meaningful lives in adulthood. That has to start then. It can't wait till they're 16 in the transition high school years, and we've got to stop the myths and the stereotypes and the stigma and the discrimination early, early on. Right now, the biggest synonym for an adult with a significant disability in this country is poverty. That's the outcome we've had for the last 50 years, or institutionalization. I looked at your FOIA reports with my wife's help, and language is important. I see on here somebody wanted to know about the number of folks who are wheelchair confined. That's an obscenity in the disability world. Nobody is confined to a wheelchair. That sets up right away a perception, a value, a stigma, and a prejudice. People use wheelchairs. The current associate commissioner of the Social Security Administration, rather high-level position in Washington, is a good friend, colleague, and former employee of mine, named Bob Williams. Bob has spastic quadriplegic cerebral palsy, and he drools. The man is intellectually gifted. He was on his way to a state institution 50 years ago, and his mother, before special ed, said he's going to the neighborhood school, and he got a master's in Georgetown. But he looks the part of the stigma of cerebral palsy in the worst possible sense. We cannot have that going on. You didn't put the question in, but that concerns me. And I'm surprised I didn't ask how many people with autism now and all the other new disorders that are coming up. I encourage you to put over the doorway to the new building, the goals of the Americans with Disabilities Act. Equal, equality of opportunity, independent living, self-sufficiency, and full participation. Inclusion is core. Kids need to grow up with their age peers. Prejudice, stigma, and stereotype is not genetic. It's learned behavior. We haven't found the gene yet that says when you're born, you don't like kids with disabilities, or people of color, or all the rest of that stuff. And I know there is some of that going on. Secretary Duncan recently said, "In schools, workplaces, throughout our public life, we're committed to ensuring that persons with disabilities have an equal chance to achieve the American dream." That's what you have a chance to do here, is to change the paradigm for these kids. And I heard about dignity and respect in this high school, dignity and respect for all the kids there. It's not just about the building. It's about the values and core values. Sir, can you grab a point for me? Okay. Technology in that school, not a frill or a luxury for kids with disabilities. It's absolutely essential as part of their plan, and we build on their gifts and strengths and their preferences. They're not broken. They don't need pity or sympathy. They need that equality of opportunity and good outcomes. And I heard return on investment earlier on the fields and on electricity. Let me assure you, the return on investment or the ROI, which I talk a lot about now in public policy, has been abysmal. You have a chance to change the paradigm. This governor is getting ready to close two institutions and taking the beating. Those institutions cost you and me as taxpayers, federal and state, $225,000 a year per person for 50 to 60 years for incarceration. We can do better. I know this school district can do better. And going back to our pledge to allegiance, what you want to be sure of is that we have liberty and justice for all, including kids with the most severe disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to share your thoughts with us. Jan Wayne? Oh, do we have another speaker?
No.
Your hand up. Okay, all right. Jan Wayne.
Good evening. Again, started the conversation about this wonderful initiative that all of you, District 200 is poured into our wonderful community of Wheaton Morneville. And again, I'll start with, in 1958, the ads came out in Southern Jefferson. Everything has a time, and Jefferson's time is common. We're not asking, the district's not asking for a Lamborghini or a Cadillac for these kids. We're not asking for plush carpet. We're not asking for spas. However, with this new building, we will be getting rid of the sauna that's in Jefferson because there's no air conditioning for the kids that have all these special needs. The district took a holistic approach to build what is needed. The time is now for a new Jefferson. Jefferson for the kids that need it the most. Thank you very much, and look forward to having a wonderful, wonderful day up the line. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And now we come to a closed session. We do have need of closed session for personnel items and purchase or lease of real property for use of the district. No action will be taken. Can I have a motion to adjourn to closed session? Mrs. Hendrick, can you call the board, please?
Mrs. Eva Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Kinnicker?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cackill?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
We stand adjourned. Thank you very much.